Good evening and welcome to an online meeting of the Burbank Planning Board on Monday, May 10, 2021. Before we begin our meeting, there will be one general period of public comment tonight during oral communications. Person speaking during the general public comment period may provide the planning board oral communication on any matter concerning city business. If you would like to participate in the public comment period, please call 818-238-3335. When we announce, the phone lines are open. Our next item is the invocation. So will everyone please rise for the invocation, which will be led by Board Member Atikunian?
Heavenly Father, as we begin this meeting, we ask that you would guide our thoughts and give us the wisdom to engage in sound deliberation. May our conduct create an environment of cooperation and kindness for all. Thank you for the opportunities you give us to serve you and this great city, and please help us accomplish our goals. In your name we pray, amen.
Board Member Rizadi will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in slitting our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Board Members. Madam Clerk, can you please conduct the roll call?
Yes. Board Member Gamboa?
Here.
Board Member Atikunian?
Present.
Board Member Rizadi?
I'm here.
Chair Liu?
Present.
Vice Chair Hadian? Let the record show, Vice Chair Hadian is absent.
Thank you. In order to balance the health risks associated with COVID-19 and the public's right to conduct the people's business in a transparent and open manner during the current state of emergency and in the interest of public health and safety, Board Members will be participating in an online planning board meeting. City facilities are closed to the public until further notice, and the public will not be able to physically attend today's meeting. The city is providing alternatives to in-person attendance for viewing and participating in planning board meetings. In lieu of in-person attendance, members of the public may participate in the board, excuse me, the public comment period by calling 818-238-3335. Do we have any announcements from city staff?
There are no announcements.
Thank you. There are no public hearings on tonight's agenda, so we'll move forward to the next item. So now is the time for reports from city staff. Do we have any reports? Yes?
Yes, we do, Chair. We have a report tonight regarding the specific plan.
Okay, great. So we'll have a report to consider the draft plan framework and development strategy for the downtown Burbank Transit Oriented Development, or TOD, specific plan and associated general plan update project. So will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize their report for us?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Leonard Boucher, and I'm going to go ahead and bring up the presentation. Just bear with me for one moment. Okay. Can everybody see the presentation?
Yes.
Perfect. Good evening, Planning Board Members. My name is Leonard Boucher, and I'm a senior planner with the Community Development Department. Tonight, we also have two members from our consultant team, Stefanos Palazoidis and Juan Gomez Novi from the firm of Mullen Palazoidis, that will be assisting me tonight with the presentation on the work that we've completed thus far for the downtown Burbank Transit Oriented Development, or TOD, specific plan. Tonight's presentation will provide a project overview and present on the plan framework and the development strategy. To begin, I'll provide a brief project overview. There are two planning documents in place that guide the land uses for downtown Burbank: the Burbank Center Plan and the San Fernando Boulevard Master Plan, adopted in 1997 and 2012 respectively. While both plans were effective at the time of adoption, they are no longer effective to help the city address the housing and affordability crisis it is currently facing. The city applied for and was awarded grant funding from Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transit Authority, or METRO, and the California Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, to update and combine both plans to create a new downtown Burbank TOD specific plan. The city of Burbank ranks high in terms of cost of housing and has one of the lowest vacancy rates in Los Angeles County, making it difficult for Burbank's workforce, individuals, and families of low and moderate income levels to find affordable housing in the city. The city's 45,000 residential units are far below the number needed to house the 130,000-plus people who currently work in Burbank. To meet the scarcity, the city council has set a goal to introduce 12,000 new dwelling units citywide by the year 2035. This shortage of housing and associated lack of affordability is also an issue of statewide concern. The state has mandated that more housing be produced locally. Burbank's Regional Housing Needs Assessment, or RENA, allocation requires the production of 8,772 units over the next eight years. This planning effort creates an opportunity for the community to re-envision downtown and allow the city to engage the community and decision-makers on developing a shared vision and guiding principles as we work collaboratively to create a plan that establishes objective standards and clear community expectations for future responsible development that builds a safe, beautiful, and thriving downtown. The specific plan preparation process consists of five key phases: discovery, visioning, plan preparation, public review of the plan and EIR, and adoption. We are well underway in the process. We have conducted the existing document review and the physical analysis that have informed the project thus far. This phase included the discovery community workshop, which was presented as part of a study session to the city council in October 2020, and to the community as part of our first virtual community workshop in November of 2020. The discovery phase was followed by the visioning phase, which was presented to the public as part of our second virtual community workshop in January 2021. We're also taking the time to get additional feedback from project stakeholders, including key property owners and developers in downtown, and our various city boards and commissions. We are holding both a development strategy, community workshop, and environmental sequel scoping meeting virtually on May 26, 2021. With community and decision-maker input, the creation of the specific plan and EIR will begin this summer with the public review of the two documents occurring towards the end of the summer or early fall. We plan to hold an additional fourth virtual community workshop as we get near to a draft plan that will present final alternatives and different plan components. We anticipate adoption of the specific plan and certification of the EAR tentatively scheduled for winter of 2022. This map here shows the approximately 965-acre plan area that's generally bounded by Lake Street, Victory Boulevard, and Mariposa Street to the west, San Fernando Boulevard and Andover Drive to the north, Glen Oaks Boulevard and Fizz Street to the east, and Tahunga Avenue and the city boundary with Glendale to the south. It is divided by the Highway Freeway and the Southern Pacific Railroad right-of-way. I'll now turn the presentation over to Stefanos Palazoidis, who will present the plan framework and the development strategy.
Thanks, Leonard, and good evening, Board Members. The plan framework describes the various individual transformations that would be implemented by the plan. These are, next please, a downtown of diverse neighborhoods, districts, and corridors; a well-connected downtown, north to south and east to west; a street network accessible to all; a public realm of streets and parks; and parking for a mixed-use downtown. The general plan rightly calls for the use of specific plans to provide goals and policies that encourage the creation of neighborhoods and districts, each with its own distinct character and sense of place. In addition, to neighborhoods and districts, we'd also add corridors as an essential component of place-making. So what are these? What are these three components of place-making? A neighborhood is a safe, beautiful, mixed-income place primarily for living that also accommodates work and some retail activity. It is defined by a quarter-mile walking radius from a center, which can be a park, a school, stores, or civic buildings, and it is organized around a public realm of streets and parks. A district is a mixed-use place primarily for commercial and retail activities that also can accommodate living. And a corridor is an important commercial or mixed-use store affair that's located between neighborhoods and districts. Examples of these in Burbank are Magnolia Boulevard, a corridor lined by shops, restaurants, offices, and services that passes between the Magnolia Park and Chandler Park neighborhoods to the downtown district. Next. The character of each neighborhood, district, and/or corridor is mostly determined by three things: the set of uses and activities that occur within each; the form of buildings, how they face and interact with the street; and how they're accessed; and the design of the streets and sidewalks that provide access to them. Next, some additional defining characteristics include the form, location, type, and access to parking, and the form and type of open space, such as streets, parks, passeos, and plazas. Next. This map shows downtown's existing neighborhoods, districts, and corridors. The diagram makes it clear how the size of buildings, their relationship to one another, and their relationship to the street vary from one neighborhood, district, or corridor to the other. Locations where buildings are missing are generally underutilized land, typically in the form of surface parking lots. While the basic underlying structure of these neighborhoods, districts, and corridors is apparent, the place-making elements are generally missing: pedestrian-friendly buildings that face and are accessed from a sidewalk; parking located behind buildings or underground; inviting open spaces; and a complete streetscape. Missing from existing zoning, this specific plan's development code will provide the framework for introducing these place-making elements. Next. Next, please. Yes. The next component of the plan framework is a well-connected downtown. Currently, existing east-west connections across the freeway, railroad tracks, and Burbank Channel, and to the MetroLink station are substandard, and in many cases, unsafe for pedestrians and bicyclists. In addition, north-south connections between downtown and the north and south San Fernando Boulevard neighborhoods are incomplete or are hampered by mega-blocks such as the Burbank Town Center Mall. Improving these connections through the introduction of transportation and aesthetic improvements will encourage downtown residents and employees to bike and walk to transit, to daily activities, and to work. These connections are enhanced by improving the experience and safety for pedestrians and cyclists crossing over and under the freeway and to the MetroLink station by introducing bike lanes, widening sidewalks, separating pedestrians and cyclists from vehicular traffic, and implementing aesthetic enhancements such as public art elements, graphics, and improved lighting. Also, introducing bicycle and pedestrian facilities is creating a more direct connection between downtown and north San Fernando Boulevard neighborhood through the Burbank Town Center Mall. And finally, transforming the bridges into gateway elements that announce to motorists on the freeway that are passing through Burbank and to those on the bridge that they're entering or leaving downtown. Southern California has a rich history of bridges that incorporate gateway elements such as pylons, light standards, and signage that could inform the design of downtown Burbank's bridges. Underpasses can be transformed in a similar way. Next, please. We typically think of streets as being generally for cars. However, in a bustling downtown that is also located next to a regional train station, there are additional uses to consider: visitors walking from dinner to a movie; jurors or office workers walking to grab a bite during the lunch break; commuters walking or biking back to the MetroLink station; and students biking to Burbank High School. There are also a number of bus routes that pass through downtown. However, introducing bike lanes or painting crosswalks in intersection is not enough. A number of design elements need to be considered further to ensure that the street network functions for all users, including motorists. These are: an interconnected and diverse network of streets; short block lengths; streets that accommodate two-way traffic and on-street parking; appropriately-sized lane widths; short pedestrian street crossings; ample sidewalks; and generous streetscape; and a possible flexible use of the street. Next. A central component of place-making is the public realm of streets, parks, and other open spaces. The character of each is defined by the neighborhood, district, or corridor it is in, and vice versa. Streetscape elements include street trees, street furniture, landscape, sidewalks, and building design features such as awnings and arcades. In addition, a variety of parks and plazas need to be conveniently located and accessible to all, their designs tailored to their location within the downtown. Green infrastructure that includes the use of stormwater capture and cleansing, and native plant and tree species can also be integrated into this public realm. Next, please. This specific plan will propose a number of parking design and parking management strategies that together will promote a vibrant, walkable downtown experience and ensure parking is available as downtown evolves and intensifies over time. Chief among these are on-street parking and curbside management, retaining on-street parking where it currently exists, introducing it where it's missing, and managing its relationship with other curbside uses such as loading zones and Uber, Lyft, taxi, and Vale pickup and drop-off locations, and bus stops. Other strategies include expanding downtown's existing Park Ones district to include more garages and parking lots that accommodate shared parking for downtown's retail, restaurant, and entertainment uses, and that also encourage patrons to Park Ones and take care of multiple activities. Implementing measures that manage parking supply and demand, including time limits, flexible pricing, monthly permits, and the like. And finally, instituting transportation demand management strategies that promote alternatives to getting to and from downtown in a car, thereby reducing the number of parking spaces that are needed. Such measures include ride share, partnering with Uber and Lyft to subsidize employing trips, and back share. And now for the development strategy and how it will achieve the community's vision. First, I will describe general place-making strategies, followed by a description of the adjustments to the general plan land use and zoning maps to better meet the city's housing goals. This will be followed by a description of the place-making strategy for each of downtown's neighborhoods, districts, and corridors, and then wrap up with a summary of the projected development potential. Next, please. As Leonard mentioned, one of the key goals of this specific plan is to enable and encourage the introduction of housing within the city of Burbank, including within this downtown area, in order to meet state housing mandates and to rebalance Burbank's jobs-to-housing ratio. The presence of the MetroLink station and the proposed Bus Rapid Transit Line along Olive Avenue provide the opportunity to introduce transit-oriented housing within walking and biking distance and to take advantage of the existing general plan's allowance for increased intensity amassing and height on parcels that are located within half a mile of the MetroLink station. Next, please. The specific plan's development, the specific plan's development standards, I should say, will augment the city's zoning code with development standards that will guide the implementation of the community's vision by ensuring new development that contributes to a genuine sense of place. This will include requiring buildings to face, to be located at or near the sidewalk, and to be accessed directly from the sidewalk through appropriate frontage types such as shop fronts, stoops, and porches. Require buildings to provide ample street-facing windows, and also encouraging innovative and creative commercial storefronts and signage designed to attract pedestrians. Next. This building should be placed near the sidewalk. Parking should be hidden from view and from public open spaces. And this is achieved by requiring new parking structures to be located underground or at the center of the block, replacing ground-floor, street-facing parking spaces in existing parking structures with shops and restaurants that are accessed directly from the sidewalk, and screening existing parking lots from the view of the sidewalk with low walls, hedges, and landscape. Next. Buildings alone do not create a sense of place. Think of the San Fernando Boulevard shopping district, but with narrow sidewalks and off-street trees. The streets, sidewalks, and public open space in front of them are just as, or arguably maybe even more, important than the buildings themselves. Street trees, street furniture, landscape, sidewalks, and building design features such as awnings and arcades are what make places inviting, pleasing, and memorable. This is achieved by using streetscape to generate unique and distinct character for each of downtown's various neighborhoods, districts, and corridors, and introducing a variety of new public parks, plazas, and other open spaces throughout downtown as valuable amenities for residents, workers, and visitors. Next. Also, development within the plan area will likely require upgrades to existing utilities. In addition, the bridge and underpass enhancements just described are major public improvements. The plan will identify potential methods for financing these upgrades, including grants, developer fees, available city funds, and/or tax increment, or other financial districts. In addition, the plan will provide a framework and strategies for funding and implementing a variety of community benefits within the specific plan area. Next. Next, please. And now for the land use strategy. Here we see the existing general plan land use map on the left and the proposed adjustments on the right. In order to conform to state of California housing mandates and meet the city's housing goals, we recommend that the land use designation of a number of city-owned parcels within the downtown civic center area be changed from institutional to downtown commercial. This will allow housing, which is not currently allowed by current zoning, to be introduced on some of these parcels. Since these parcels are owned by the city, the city will have direct control over how any housing is introduced, is integrated with the city's plan to expand the civic center. In addition, due to the potential incompatibility between housing and the existing Burbank power plant, we recommend changing the land use designation of the parcels immediately to the east and south of the power plant, from downtown commercial to north victory commercial industrial. While the residential density of the downtown commercial designation would no longer apply, the existing two-and-a-half-floor area ratio limit will continue to apply per the proposed zoning shown in the next slide. Next, please. Here we see... Next, please. Here we see the existing zoning map on the left and the proposed on the right. First, note the boundaries of the proposed zones align directly with the boundaries of the land use designation shown in the general plan. We saw the slide of this in the previous image. Second, the proposed zoning re-applies zoning to the various parcels currently subject to plan development permits, most of which do not permit housing. Introducing zoning of these parcels enables over 4,000 variety units to be introduced. Next. And now for the place-making strategy for the plan areas, neighborhoods, districts, and corridors, starting with the downtown district. Next. The downtown district first. While San Fernando Boulevard in the downtown district has a well-defined sense of place, many streets within the district lack street trees or are fronted by parking structures, surface parking lots, and buildings with black walls. The introduction of new, appropriately-sized and massed mixed-use and multifamily buildings that engage the sidewalk along with a robust and cohesive streetscape will transform downtown into a memorable place where people truly want to live, workshop, visit, and play. The zoning that will guide this transformation is shown here. Four zones, basically in alignment with the underlying general plan land use designations, and employing the place-making strategies that we discussed previously. Next, please. Key goals for the downtown district include preserving and enhancing San Fernando Boulevard as Burbank's most important shopping, dining, and entertainment destination; encouraging use of alleys and passeos for circulation, restaurant seating, and stormwater capture; expanding the civic center; and re-imaging the Burbank Town Center. Next. San Fernando Boulevard is the heart of downtown. It'll be enhanced in general conformance with the recently adopted Complete Streets Plan, retaining angled parking, introducing additional street trees, widening sidewalks through the use of parklets, and, most importantly, make it easy to temporarily close it down to traffic for special events. Next, please. The civic center consists of the government buildings and parking facilities, including and surrounding City Hall, the Burbank Police and Fire Headquarters Building, the Burbank Administrative Services Building, the Burbank County Courts Building, and the Post Office. Sites identified to accommodate expansion consist primarily of existing city-owned surface parking lots. You can see that in the drawing to the left. Next. The civic expansion could include a new central library, additional administrative office space, a civic park or plaza that is designed to conform to the site's existing topography, and a new parking garage. New housing could also be incorporated, including on the existing central library site once a new library is built. Parking for the civic center will be coordinated with the overall downtown parking management strategy. And finally, the civic park or plaza, or a separate transit plaza, will ensure easy access to Metro's proposed Bus Rapid Transit Line, which includes a route along Olive Avenue. Next, please. In this sketch concept, a parking garage lined with commercial or residential uses is introduced along Glen Oaks Boulevard. The existing city of Burbank Administrative Services Building is replaced with a new central library. A civic plaza or green is introduced in the City Hall parking lot, and the portion of the City Hall parking garage facing the plaza is lined with commercial or residential uses. Finally, a new Administrative Services Building is introduced on the underutilized parcels adjacent to the City Hall parking garage, and residential buildings are introduced across the street from the new civic center parking garage. Next. In this alternative concept sketch, the lined parking garage is situated along Orange Grove Avenue with a new central library to the south. The old Administrative Services Building is replaced with a civic plaza, and a new Administrative Services Building is constructed on the City Hall parking lot. Finally, following the construction of the new City Hall parking garage, the existing City Hall parking garage that spans across Orange Grove Avenue is removed and replaced with a mixed-use building. Next. And now for the Burbank Town Center. Historically, San Fernando Boulevard ran uninterrupted through downtown Burbank, extending San Fernando Boulevard through the mall site either as a vehicular street or a pedestrian paso would provide or a pedestrian paseo would provide a crucial north-south connection between the north-San Fernando neighborhood and downtown. Other potential interventions include introducing an urban park or plaza surrounded by ground floor retail and restaurants, introducing housing, constructing office buildings along First Street and adjacent to the I-5 freeway and retaining the existing multi-level parking garages. Keeping the parking garages may create new shared parking opportunities and means that the $25,000 to $50,000 that would normally be spent to build each new parking space can be spent on important place-making features such as open space, streetscape and beautiful buildings. The conceptual images illustrate the types of buildings, streets and open spaces that are envisioned for this site. Next. Here we see the existing town center site, the site in its current condition. Next. And this is a conceptual sketch of how the town center could develop over time. The three parking garages are retained as is Maces. An urban plaza or green is introduced at the terminus of San Fernando Boulevard. Housing with ground floor retail is introduced around the plaza and in front of Maces. And an office building is introduced at the corner of First Street and Magnolia Boulevard. Finally, new housing is introduced on the old IKEA site. Next. And here... Well, let's go back one if we can. Leonard, I think there's a little bit of a serious lag. And here Maces is, and here Maces removed and San Fernando Boulevard lined by residential or mixed-use buildings is extended through, providing a direct link to north San Fernando Boulevard. Next. The north-San Fernando neighborhood is generally automobile-oriented in character. Most buildings are set back from the sidewalk behind parking lots or face the street with blank walls. In addition, there are a number of underutilized parcels that are prime for infill development. Four zones, all in alignment with the underlying general plan, general plan land use designations will guide the transformation of the north San Fernando neighborhood. These zones include the mid-density neighborhood one zone, the high-density residential neighborhood two zone, the mixed-use urban corridor zone and the civic zone which applies to the Burbank High School site. Next. Though automobile-oriented in character, the north-San Fernando area possesses a number of neighborhood building blocks that can be leveraged to generate a vibrant, memorable neighborhood. These include My Cambridge Park, which provides nearly open space, nearby open space and recreation facilities, two grocery stores proximity to downtown shopping and entertainment district, Burbank High School and the potential of north-San Fernando Boulevard to become a main street that provides neighborhood-serving retail and services. This transformation begins with the introduction of new multifamily residential mixed-use buildings on the north-San Fernando neighborhood's various underutilized parcels. Next. One important opportunity site recently acquired by the city from Caltrans is the parcel previously occupied by the northbound Burbank Boulevard Cloverleaf Off-Ramp, which provides one and a half acres of vacant land for development. The existing neighborhood just to the north, bounded by San Fernando Boulevard, Scott Road and Leland Way, provides an opportunity for introducing new house form, missing middle, middle-density multifamily buildings that seamlessly fit into the single-family setting. In order to create a more pedestrian-friendly environment, new streets are introduced on blocks over four acres in area. Next please. Public realm enhancements include improving pedestrian bicycle connections to My Cambridge Park, Burbank High School, downtown and other destinations, introducing new and reconfigured existing on-street parking along San Fernando Boulevard, Cornell Drive and Delaware Road as illustrated in the adopted north Fernando Boulevard master plan. Next. Here you see the north-San Fernando neighborhood area with the opportunity sites outlined in red. Next. And here's a concept sketch which shows how this neighborhood's various opportunity sites are infilled and the larger blocks are broken up with the introduction of new streets, in this case extending Walnut Avenue Third Street. Other potential extensions include Delaware Road or Cornell Drive to Scott Street. Public realm improvements include the introduction of first-last-mile bicycle facilities to enhance access to My Cambridge Park, Burbank High School, the two grocery stores downtown and specifically the metro link station. Next. Now, the south San Fernando Boulevard neighborhood is built out with high-density multifamily buildings constructed over the last six to seven years. The streets that bound at Glen Oaks, Alameda, San Fernando and Verdugo are developed with an eclectic mix of commercial, residential and small-size buildings. Most of the streets within the neighborhood are missing street trees hampering their sense of place. Three zones, all in alignment with the underlying general plan land use designations, will guide the incremental intensification of the south neighborhood, south San Fernando neighborhood. Next. Key place-making transformations here include introducing new multifamily residential buildings that face and are accessed from the street through appropriate frontages such as porches and stoops and locating parking underground or at the rear of each development site. Next. Public improvements within the San Fernando neighborhood include introducing street trees on existing neighborhood streets and improving pedestrian and bicycle connections to downtown, San Fernando Boulevard and Glen Oaks Boulevard through the introduction of streetscape improvements, intersection improvements and new bicycle facilities. Located south of downtown, the south San Fernando Commercial District is bounded by the I-5 freeway, Verdugo Avenue, San Fernando Boulevard and the city's southern boundary. Existing uses are primarily light industrial with a smattering of commercial, most notably IKEA. With the exception of the four blocks just south of Verdugo Avenue, blocks within the sub-area are all mega-blocks. One zone, the urban general zone, will enable the introduction of multifamily and mixed-use buildings while continuing to accommodate existing commercial and light industrial businesses. Next. Key goals then for the south San Fernando district are to support existing and new commercial and light industrial uses while enabling more intense residential and mixed-use buildings to be introduced over time, especially along San Fernando Boulevard with streetscape improvements were recently completed. Also to encourage the conversion of existing commercial structures to accommodate work-live residential units. Next. The bubble art installation in front of IKEA currently surrounded by landscape offers an opportunity to be transformed into a publicly accessible open space with paths, benches and other amenities. Infilling the portion of the IKEA parking lot adjacent to the bubble open space with commercial or mixed-use buildings which generate a better frontage along the open space, improving the experience of the potential park. Next please. And now to the west of the freeway and the Olive Avenue TOD district. This district is located west of the I-5 freeway and south of Magnolia Boulevard and is home to the Burbank Downtown Metro Link Station, the City of Burbank Power Plant and a variety of commercial, light industrial and media-related uses including the Nickelodeon Studios. Three new zones will guide development here with the important change that residential uses will no longer be allowed on the parcels currently subject to the downtown commercial general plan use designation shown in dark blue on this diagram. However, commercial intensity currently allowed by the general plan, up to two-and-a-half FAR, will continue to be allowed on these parcels. Next. Development strategies for the Olive Avenue TOD district include introducing a dense, walkable urban pedestrian-friendly TOD that accommodates a wide range of uses including light industrial, office, media, service commercial, restaurant and hospitality uses. And also, growing the concentration of media-related business and supporting land uses by attracting new media and creative offices. Next. As with other neighborhoods and districts so far, an important development strategy for creating an urban, walkable environment around the metro link station in this district is to introduce new streets and blocks that are four acres or more in size. Other development and place-making strategies include transforming Victory Boulevard into a main street that provides neighborhood-serving uses for the Olive Avenue TOD district and introducing streetscape improvements that activate the street and create a pedestrian-friendly environment. Next. On the transit side, the proposed North Hollywood to Pasadena BRT line along Olive Avenue is welcome with stops introduced at the intersection of Olive Avenue and Victory Boulevard and on the Olive Avenue Bridge at the metro link station. In conjunction with construction of a high-speed rail, east-west connectivity is enhanced with the introduction of a bridge or underpass across the railroad tracks at Verdugo Boulevard. Next. Finally, to improve bicycle mobility, bicycle facilities linking the Olive Avenue District to the metro link station downtown and the Burbank Channel back bikeway are also introduced. Next. The Olive Avenue TOD district is envisioned to infill over time with commercial buildings that support creative and media-related uses. Mega-blocks and large parcels are reduced in size with introduction of streets lined with trees and buildings that face and are accessed from the sidewalk. Parcels adjacent to Burbank Channel are encouraged to introduce open space that relates to the back way. Next. Again, west of the freeway, the Victory Boulevard Creative and Industrial Corridor. Located in the northwest portion of the plan area, the Victory Boulevard Creative and Industrial District consists mainly of commercial and light industrial buildings and uses including the city's water reclamation plant, importantly, single-family residential neighborhoods bordered to the west. Four new zones, all aligned with the underlying general plan land use designations, will guide development here and will form its future. Next. In continuity with existing zoning, the new zones will facilitate light industrial, commercial, media, creative and other job-producing uses and also support adaptive reuse of existing buildings for office, media and creative uses. Next please. The new zones will also enable the introduction of housing in areas located near residential neighborhoods particularly within the area bounded by Victory Boulevard, Burbank Boulevard, Maripossa Street and Chandler Boulevard. In addition, all new development near these single-family neighborhoods will continue to be required to step down in height and scale to the existing single-family houses. Next. Public realm improvements and community benefits within the Victory Boulevard Creative and Industrial Corridor will include introducing bicycle facilities that complete the link between the eastern and western sides of the plan area to the metro link station and to surrounding neighborhoods. This will include extending the existing Channel Boulevard back way to the Burbank Channel back way and to the metro link station itself. Also expanding parking by introducing additional on-street parking such as along the north side of Chandler Boulevard in conjunction with the extension of the Chandler Boulevard back way. Next. The general plan has two land use policies that allow the density and intensity limits on applicable parcels to be exceeded by up to 25%. The first is for TOD parcels within transit corridors and centers as identified in the general plan mobility element. The second is for exceptional projects that advance the general plan's goals and policies. The parcels within the specific plan that may qualify for the TOD bonus is shown here in blue, while the parcels that may qualify for the exceptional project bonus are shown in yellow. That, as you can see, covers the entire project area. Next. As part of the specific plan development strategy, staff will define in more detail the qualification requirements for both TOD and exceptional projects and incorporate a voluntary program that would allow developers the ability to increase base density and intensity up to 25% in exchange for providing a certain number of public benefits such as those that increase affordability consistent with the city's inclusionary housing program, increase onsite and offsite open space, increase offsite bicycle pedestrian improvements and/or contribute towards the city's neighborhood protection efforts, this through better project form. The next step is to develop a list of public benefits based on these four categories that will be incorporated in the specific plan's development standards as a tiered menu correlated with increases in density and intensity. A bigger increase in density will require a bigger share of community benefits and also a bigger, yeah, a bigger increase in density will require a bigger share of community benefits. Next. So, a number of parcels have been identified as opportunities for infill intensification and adaptive reuse over the plan's 15-year horizon. This consists of opportunity sites shown on the right and pipeline project sites shown on the left. The opportunity sites are 14 groupings of generally underutilized parcels within the plan area. Pipeline project sites applied to parcels that developers have already submitted applications to the city to develop housing, hotel and commercial uses there. Next. And here's the development potential for the pipeline project sites. 834 residential units, just under 60,000 square feet of non-residential square footage and just over 500 hotel rooms. Next. And here is the development potential for the opportunity sites. 4,745 residential units, just under 4 million square feet of non-residential square footage and almost 600 hotel rooms. Next. And finally, here's the development potential for all sites together. Just over 5,500 residential units, just under 4 million square feet of non-residential square footage and over 1,000 hotel rooms. This is the development potential that will be studied by the Environmental Impact Report. Thank you for your time and for your attention and we're here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. So, we're gonna have public comments at this point. So, if any persons would like to speak about this, excuse me, this report, comments are limited to three minutes and to participate, please call 818-238-3335. So, the phone lines are open now and please bear with us because it may take a few minutes for the first callers to get through the line. for the first callers to get through the line.
Madam Chair, we're going to give it one more minute, see if we get any callers. Madam Chair, we didn't receive any calls.
Okay, thank you. So, there being no public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed. Does the board have any questions, staff, or comments? Board Member Akkadian, I can't see you, so feel free to unmute yourself if you do have a comment, but I see Board Member Rosati has his hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, staff, for this presentation. It was very thorough. It's exciting. I was part of this scoping meeting six, seven years ago. I would like to see it, you know, I'd like to see this put in play. I think, you know, I mentioned this last time in the scoping meeting, and I'll mention it again, I think it's important that you have a central market downtown. If you really want to get people out of their cars and make this a true walking, biking community, especially downtown, I know we got one over on San Fernando Road on both sides, but if it's going to be downtown that's too far of a walk for a supermarket, I think you need a really good supermarket downtown, especially if you're going to infill downtown with as many homes as you're talking about. People are going to just want to walk down, walk about a block and a half, two blocks, two, maybe three to a market. Also, just comments on the bike lanes. I think moving forward, if possible, every bike lane should be a protected bike lane, similar to what we did on Hollywood Way up towards the airport. I think that is an integral part, should be an integral part of our process moving forward, and if we are going to put a new master plan together, all the bike lanes should be protected. But, you know, I like to see, I like to see it move forward, and I think it starts with changing, I mentioned this in the past, as soon as you change the designation of those lands to being able to build housing, you will see it, you'll see it take off. You'll see these properties move, you'll see them turn over, where for decades and decades they haven't. As soon as you change that designation, you'll see the turnover, and hopefully we can start adding to our single-family home portfolio. But thanks for the, thanks for the presentation, I thought it was great.
Thank you, Board Member Rosati. Board Member Akkadian?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Lou, I had a comment in reference to when these designations, zoning designations are switched over or changed to accommodate these developments, are there going to be consideration not only switching it over to a, its equivalent in commercial zoning, but perhaps a higher density zoning for development of residential properties, meaning that instead of a height being, let's say, restricted to 35 feet, would there be a, maybe a supercharging it, meaning that the height could go to 55 feet? Or is it just going to be a switch over? Has that been considered?
Yes, Board Member Akkadian, thank you for that question. That is something that we are looking into. We didn't get into it tonight, but we are looking to develop basically a set of base heights for each zone, and essentially being able to build above those base heights would, similar to what we presented to you tonight about the community benefits and, you know, the TOD and the exceptional projects, and allowing for projects to bump up development intensity and density, essentially would be the same for heights, whereby if the developer chose to provide community benefits or some kind of a plan improvement, they could essentially increase the height of their property. It's somewhat similar to what we do now. If you look at the height as allowed in downtown, we currently allow height to go into, you know, higher story counts for projects that go through like a conditional use permit, projects that come before as a development agreement or a PD. And so essentially, it would kind of be the same idea, and usually with those projects, we do extract a number of community benefits and project benefits, but essentially, we would make those baked into the specific plan so that they would have the set of objective standards, they'd have kind of the goals of each individual zone that they're wanting to build in, and then essentially in providing those improvements, they could get increases in heights, and then, of course, if they decide to go through the process that we establish for the increase in density and intensity, we would also get benefits through that process.
Thank you for that. I mean, I've noticed that we have a couple of tall buildings, one on the corner of Magnolia and Glen Oaks, and yet all the other buildings surrounding that, well, a couple of tall buildings there, but all the other buildings surrounding that are just much, much lower, so I don't understand if that's an anomaly of some sort. And then in the downtown area, we don't have any building as tall as those, so it's just a, anyway, I appreciate your comment, and I'm glad that it's being taken into consideration.
Thank you, thank you for the input.
Yes, Board Member Gamboa?
Thank you, Chair Lou. Thank you for staff for their report, I think it was great, and I'd like to second Board Member Rosati's comments, I think he had a lot of great comments on the plan and things that I would agree with. I also want to, I don't have a whole lot because essentially, as I walk and use this neighborhood daily, a lot of the things I see and experience are things that you've incorporated into this plan, so it's almost like you just kind of picked my brain for a lot of these interventions, like mid-blocks, like block crossings, densities, types of uses, especially that neighborhood on Leland by the freeway, I think those are good opportunities. I would like to emphasize this, this plan to have that BRT stop on Olive to really connect with the Metrolink Station. I know there's talks about stop on Lake down on Olive, which is kind of the path of least resistance, but I think the best opportunity is on the Olive Bridge, so if we can make that part of our planning, long-term planning, I would like to see that. And I think the opportunities for value capture when these parcels get rezoned are high, so I would encourage, if you haven't already, to try to take in a market study to best calibrate what those tools are to ensure that we're going to actually get some of these benefits and not hinder some of the development that could happen on these sites. Otherwise, I think, you know, talking about the IKEA frontage on San Fernando is important, that place is a dead zone that needs to be remedied. I think the Walnut Street was, is a huge idea, and it's super useful, and just connecting through the long-term plans about the mall, I think having that conversation is great. So, and I think a lot of other things that maybe kind of fall into the complete streets plan, but I think that, you know, there's still a lot of other pedestrian interventions we should be exploring in terms of by the school and by the park to ensure that it's safe to traverse back and forth, especially with potentially more residences. And I would also, I guess one question is, was there any consideration to, looking at the zoning on Glen Oaks and the east side of the street, it kind of captures all those parcels that butt the street, but it stops before, you know, right around, I think, Cornell or Bethany. Has there been any discussions about taking that all the way up to Andover to kind of create this full on-frontage for Glen Oaks that has access to the school and to the parks and to the other, you know, connections in the area, and to the grocery stores on outside of the street? But, yeah, that'd be my only question, otherwise, I think it's a great job, and I really like what you guys have come up with.
And just to briefly answer the question, I think the, essentially, we did extend the plan boundary to cover the Cambridge Park. Initially, it wasn't, but essentially, our anticipation is that we would want to see those street improvements be done to the streets that surround the park. We can look at kind of those properties, I guess, immediately east of the park to see if it makes sense to include them. I think the only issue with those properties, especially as we get away from the high school, is that you start to kind of go into single-family, so putting multifamily there, I think, would, you know, I think upset the, kind of the progression of the lower density as we go along, but we'll take a look at it again.
And I think, too, to be clear, is, we don't, to maybe look at it not as multifamily, but as more single-family, like, is there opportunities to have, you know, smaller parcels that front the Glen Oaks that almost, almost like a townhouse, but not quite a townhouse? Like, there's, there's big, long, you know, spaces there, there could be opportunities for better frontage, better street interaction, a few more, you know, single-family houses that are so popular around here as well. So, I don't think it has to be, you know, a seven-story apartment building, but it could be, you know, a 2,500-square-foot lot, something like that.
Understood.
I think that's, I think, I think that's a great idea, that's a good point. If you can, if you can infill that with small lot development, kind of like Chandler, it's really popular with walkways, I think it's a very, I think Board Member Gamboa makes a very good point there.
Okay. Thank you, Board Members. Any other further comments?
Chair, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Just to get, I'd like to get the input of the board, or, not that you weren't paying attention to this part of it, but I know we talked about the Civic Center, and I know there was a plan previously, and the specific plan's kind of the new opportunity to take a look at that, and you saw in the presentation, I'd just like to get your input as a group, what you thought about that. I mean, clearly, we're, there's a lot of things that can happen in the Civic Center, but I was curious to see, based on the presentation, if there was any additional input or things that you think we should consider. I know we heard a grocery store and other things towards the downtown core, but the Civic Center itself, I think, creates a new opportunity that I'd like to get your input on.
Yes, Board Member Rosati.
Did that include like a new City Hall or just a revised City Hall revamped?
Yeah, we don't want to, we don't want to mess with the historic City Hall.
I know, I saw the picture I was asking.
Yeah, but around it, you know, there's things like, we're looking at the library, you know, is getting to a point where I think they're looking at reevaluating that, we have other potential needs in the Civic Center.
It'd be cool to have a, I'm sure everyone's been down there, Grand Central Station, something like that with the outdoor or venue where all the foods and flower shops, and it's just, it's a, it's really vibrant when you go down there, and it would be cool to have something like that downtown, like a Grand Central Station with lots of stores and shops and places to buy flowers, and you can even incorporate the farmer's market into it, and I think it'd be, you know, it'd just be kind of a safe space where you can just, you can walk or ride into and be able to shop and buy and walk away, and I think it'd be kind of a fun element if you can squeeze that in with, I know you want to get housing in there too, but incorporate the two where people can come down to kind of a Grand Central Station, we call it Burbank Grand Central Station, maybe.
Thank you.
Board Member Gamboa?
Yeah, with regards to the Civic Center, I think that's, that's what I was alluding to a little bit about kind of picking my brain, I go down there often as just, you know, we park around there, we walk around there, and the idea for Green Space Park right by City Hall, I think, is perfect. You know, that turns into the ice rink in the winter in the parking lot, and if there's a park year-round, if there's a place for people around there to go and have lunch and just kind of hang out, especially, you know, the lack of other green space in the area, I think that's kind of brilliant, and I think also the opportunity to put parking in like the police station parking lot, like a parking structure or mixed, some sort of building with additional parking there on Glen Oaks, that could be really interesting as well. So, I think the concepts and ideas that you, that you all put together for the Civic Center, I think, are inspired and practical, and I think they are what is needed, and I think you couple that with something like Board Member Rosati's idea with these kind of market spaces and incorporating the farmer's market, then it could be a really unique, even more unique place than it is now. So, I think those ideas lend itself well to that, and I think that those concepts were good, especially, I think, looking at, you know, I think, you know, we're talking about parking, and that's a big issue, and you got a parking structure there, but that goes over the street, which creates this weird barrier, so I think a concept that gets rid of that is interesting to contemplate as well, so I appreciate that extra alternative in there. So, I think whatever, whatever is, one, practical, but also gives us what we need in terms of open space and civic space is important, and I think, you know, balancing that out and having the different ideas is smart. So, yes, so the Civic Center, I think, is a really good opportunity, especially because City Hall faces Olive, but a lot of times when you approach it, when you park there, you're parking that parking lot, and you're coming in from the back way anyway. So, if we create more of a place on the backside of City Hall, so it's double side, it's like 360 almost, and you appreciate the building more, it's kind of more of a civic use, and I think we get a lot more, we create a lot more better public space by doing something like that.
Board Member Akkadian, did you want to add to this?
Yes, thank you. The, to meet the residential needs, perhaps in order to drive the retail is perhaps a little bit more residential, and that's why I was earlier asking about the height restrictions, and to have the mixed-use residential and retail, where you have the retail space and it creates the energy, and the residents there basically utilizing the services, and it's very close by. And with COVID-19, I think more and more people are going to be at home versus in offices, and I'm not sure if this is going to be a long-term trend or it's just a short-term thing, but I think that that may be to convert or to have a little bit more residential in downtown, to give it a more of a downtown feel where you live and work in downtown type of a thing, and create that energy there where it's lacking now. It's, and there's no, how should I say, a flow, there's no flow between the services provided and some of the things that are there, it's kind of like disjointed, they're not, they're not feeding off of each other type of a thing. So, to try and create more of an energy within that three, four-block region to have it more walkable, user-friendly, services available, and at the same time, people are living in their, you know, condominiums or high-rise or whatever to work and playing downtown Burbank. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I would agree with my fellow board members, I think, let's say it was version one, you showed a few versions, and I want to say it's version one, it had the amphitheater and, and just that gathering place, and then the suggestion for the housing. I also think, I mean, the San Fernando, I know there are traffic issues, but when, when that, that street is closed for, for events, it really just does create that, I think, that energy of people just kind of wanting to go there, and, I mean, I don't know how that would affect like, for it to be always be like that, but, but that might be one of the ways that you're, you're creating more of that space, but that gathering space. But yes, I highly agree with like the, making sure that you, you keep a room for housing, more housing in that area. more housing in that area. Any other comments? Yes, Board Member Rosati?
Since we're dreaming, we seem to have like a hodgepodge of architecture style, it's not really too cohesive, and, and I don't know if it's too late, you know, to create that, but, you know, if you go to Lock and Yada, they kind of have like a craftsman style, and Santa Barbara's a mission theme, and Pasadena's kind of a Spanish or colonial Spanish. It'd be nice if we can have kind of an architectural style that's cohesive and not kind of a hodgepodge of, you know, modern and, and old, and just something a little bit more cohesive, I don't know if there's any, and I'm not, I'm not great at this part of it as far as architecture, I know, I'd just like to see something a little bit more smoother as far as cohesive look, but I don't know if that's possible to do at this stage because we're so developed as a city, but if we're going to be doing as much as we're going to be doing, maybe some thought should be put into maybe a theme. Makes sense? I don't know if this makes sense to you?
Yeah.
Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Well, I thank you, staff, and for that excellent report, and actually for all the work that has been done, thank to the community members, everyone who's provided input through the years on this. It's a lot of work, but it's very, as Board Member Rosati said, very exciting and something I look forward to as well. So I'd be happy to entertain a motion to note and file this report as recommended.
I'll move that.
Thank you, Board Member Rosati. Do you have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Board Member Gamboa. May I have oral call, please?
Board Member Gamboa?
Yes.
Board Member Otakunian?
Yes.
Board Member Rosati?
Yes.
And Chair Lou?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, there are any additional reports from city staff?
There are no additional reports.
Thank you. So now we are going to oral communications where the public may speak on any matter concerning city business. So comments are limited to three minutes, and if you want to participate, please call So the phone lines are open now, and again, please bear with us, it might take a few minutes for you to get through, and we'll wait and see if anyone would like to speak.
Chair, we didn't receive any comments.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. So there being no public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed. We are going to move to approval in a minute from May 3, 2021, of the Planning Board meeting. There are any questions, comments, and/or a motion?
I can make the motion if you'd like, Madam Chair.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you, Board Member Rosati. Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Board Member Otakunian. May I have oral call, please?
Yes, Board Member Gamboa?
Yes.
Board Member Otakunian?
I'll abstain since I was not present.
Board Member Rosati?
Yes.
Chair Lou?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, so now it's time for our introduction of additional agenda items. Some Planning Board members may introduce any items for discussion, but no action may be taken except to place the item on a future agenda. Do our members of the board have any items to introduce? Okay. City Planner comments. Mr. Ramirez, do we have, do you have any comments?
I do. Madam Chair, I have one announcement. The city is seeking communities' input regarding short-term rentals in Burbank. There's a, the short-term rentals of residential property that is rented for a brief duration, typically for 30 days or less, and online five-minute survey is available at www.burbankca.gov/str. Once again, www.burbankca.gov/str, and this survey will be open until May 21, 2021. And for more information, please contact Nick Berant or Karen Penn at 818-238-5187. Once again, for more information, please contact Nick Berant and/or Karen Penn at 818-238-5187. And that's the only announcement we have.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. So we are now going to adjourn the online Planning Board meeting to Monday, May 24, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. The public is invited to view the meeting online or on television, and we'll be able to provide public comments in two, in the following two ways. The first is by leaving an e-comment on the city webpage, which is burbankca.gov/ecomments, or by calling indirectly to the Planning Board meeting at 818-238-3335. Thank you all for your participation, and have a great evening.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.